The United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Ideman?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Very good. Like the most for approval of the agenda?
Approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to city administrators' report.
I handed you an update at your seats. Item one, we've got 48 people now that have responded to our Facebook questionnaire. We'll leave it up for another week and a half or so and then bring all that information back in a work session in October. Again, there's no rush on this, but we'll keep pursuing it and get as many people to participate as possible. We're opening bids next Tuesday for the Washington Street retaining wall. So far, 13 companies, and I think we had another one more add in today. So we've got 14 companies that may be bidding on it, they're at least on the bidders list. We'll receive the bids probably Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday, we'll have it in here, so some people just show up the day of with their bid. Item seven, the diorama at the Amro House is relocating to the Welcome Center, and that'll be Monday. So in that case, we're going to close the Welcome Center because there's going to be a lot of activity around there. So there'll still be people there answering the phone for MODOC and tourism questions, but we just want to have the front doors open because we don't want to get tourists in there at the same time we got people working. And then if you have any comments about the five-year supervised water main plan that Cochran brought to us at the last meeting, please get those to me if you want to see things moved around or discussed more. Otherwise, we need to make it, we need to approve it, at least do a resolution, so that Cochran can then send it to the, send it to DNR for approval from their side of it. So I haven't heard anything from anybody. I figured whatever's scheduled you're okay with at this point, but look at that closely. If you do have a question or concern, let me know. Otherwise, any other questions about what I've?
When was the proper time for you to talk about the Washington Street wall? You know, we talked about a couple other things back some time ago about having the particular homeowner sign off on the plan before we proceed.
So I have still, I've gone down and discussed it with her and gone through the whole plan from top to bottom, end to end. I haven't got her signature on it, but I did get her verbal okay on everything that we're doing.
Yeah, I think that would be, if a signature would be very appropriate. I've heard some talk, and I'd just like to know all those are put to bed.
I agree. And there will probably be some change orders because you have neighbors that want to see an improved fence. They may want to see some different type of landscaping between the wall and the street. So don't be surprised about that, but it's nothing we're paying for. It's just, there may be change orders as to what will go in. We have a flat, we're going to see what the flat amounts are based on what the contractors bring us, and then we'll go from there. But yeah, I'll take it down to her. She's been very cooperative. I haven't had any issues. So I'll take it down and get her signature on it.
And my understanding is that alleyway is still going to be kept open even though it's pretty steep coming up through there, but there is officially an alleyway there.
It's, I mean, it just goes from where the wall is existing, so I don't think that wall extends into that alley at all.
Right.
So it just goes to where she's got a chin on the fence. So that's pretty much where our street, the curving and the street part starts. Anything else? Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Toby? For our staff report?
I have my written report here. Happy to mention about the Welcome Center, community going on down there. The city workers helped relocate a display of vertical log structures that's now in the Welcome Center. We hosted a speech last night by Dr. Charles Belisi that had our social distancing capacity of 30 people, so that went well. As mentioned here, the city-owned artwork has gone across the street to the Jean Baptiste Valet House, as has the art colony work that's owned by the Women's Club. All that will be available for exhibit on display October 3rd when we have a Fall of Colors event in town. I've summarized the grant program in terms of what we've been spending money on with that program. And we have some upcoming events. This weekend is the Plain Air Artist Event. They're modifying that a little bit this year, keeping it just local artists due to the COVID situation. But they are having their show and sale on Saturday outdoors. They have a tent they'll be putting up next to their new building on the Cord House Square. We'll have an encampment down at the Moses Austin Park on Saturday from 10 to 4:00. We'll also have a Model A Car Club passing through town about the middle of the day for their lunch, and they'll be parking, I think, in that new parking lot that the county has constructed. So we have the October 2nd through 4th weekend, the County Fair is going to have some of their events that they would have had in July that they postponed. That weekend's also going to be a lot of activity downtown. A 5K run and walk, some food and music events, both at the Jean Baptiste Valet House and at the Lions Club. And then in the evening, the shops are going to have a project graduation fundraiser. They'll be open till 8:00, and part of the proceeds from the shops will be going to project graduation. On October 27th, on 17th, we have the Night of the Werewolf that French Colonial America puts on every year. We also have Dennis Stromat in town that evening for a free concert on the back porch of the Jean Baptiste Valet House. The 24th is the Deja Vu Spirit Reunion. It takes place every year in the cemetery. I believe that same weekend, the Park Board is planning to do something, kind of an activity that'll bring some families downtown for pumpkins, they do pumpkin carving, Ashley, is that right?
Yes.
And then we're still working on an event for early November called, it's going to be themed with pecans. They'll have some music and food and different things as well. The last sheet is the visitor total rundown from the last few weeks. I didn't make a note that on September 12th, it was one of our lower days in terms of crowds through the Welcome Center, 65 people. That was also the weekend of the Octane Club, so even though Friday shows 44 people, there were about 80 vehicles parked at Audubon's parking lot and at the county parking lot that Friday afternoon, and those people shopped around and had lunch in town. Are there any questions?
Toby, on our consent agenda, the street closure, is that like similar to the garden walk? It's not going to obstruct Main Street? Stop? Okay, thank you.
Not Main Street, and you'll still have access to our parking lot on the backside.
Okay.
We're just going to have a couple vendors. The Boy Scouts are going to make some Dutch oven cobbler, and we're going to have Lunas coming down to do shaved ice. And we've had another one lined up, but they are self-quarantining, so they're not coming that weekend, but.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Steve Bennett? Good evening.
How are you? I have a tremendous amount to report. I did, on the grant section, I reported last time about a block grant that we were hoping to put in for, that is, on the resolution tonight, or the consent agenda will be to purchase two, two more mobile data stations for Jason Crump and myself. So that all the cars would be outfitted then, so. I don't believe it's a match grant. I think that maybe we would have to pay for it, and then the grant would reimburse us 100%, but that is on the agenda for later. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Steve, how many hours are we going to hire a year, or are they required ahead?
They just changed it. We used to have 48 every three years. Now it's 24 hours a year, so it's not, it's not terrible. Like I said, we're still researching a little bit more effective grant, or training opportunities that I think would benefit the city a little better. If we can find a good cost-effective method for that, that more specialized training than just, just the basic, you know, bare minimum 24 hours, but actually something that would benefit the officers in the city, I think we'd be money ahead on that. Just trying to find, especially in COVID times, you know, places that are putting on training and actually having live training is proving difficult for us.
Is there a specific type of training that you would need?
It just depends. If, you know, if an officer is more interested in interdiction work, you know, drug narcotics work, whatever, you know, somebody that likes traffic work could, you know, go to some type of DUI training or DWI training, or even like drug identification training, things like that. Just, you know, like I said, we would like to poll the officers as far as what their interests are, where, you know, where they want to see themselves in law enforcement, you know, maybe some investigative classes for people, you know, or crime scene processing classes that would actually benefit the department as a whole.
Eric, is the only prescription return program to the Sheriff's Department?
They have the collection box for it, yes. They have asked us about putting one in here, but our office doesn't stay open 24 hours. It is just not as secured as, I mean, the Sheriff's Department actually has staff there around the clock. We have staff on around the clock, but not necessarily at the office, and they don't want to put it outside. It has to be inside somewhere.
More secure, right?
So, yeah, so the lobby of the Sheriff's Department is, the Health Department will take it also, I believe, but it's during office hours. Thank you.
Steve?
Everybody has my report. Would like to say that storm we had last month, we finally got all the paperwork back from Equipment Pro. I believe Happy has everything he needs to, for that claim. That's for a pump and a VFD motor drive out there, a point-based tank that was damaged by lightning during a storm. We have been hauling, been removing the line residuals from the water treatment plant process. We got Metro Ag in here this week, removing, if anybody's been down St. Mary's Road, you'll notice increased truck traffic. We did build an attachment for the back of our truck, as we discussed last time, that keeps the roads wet. So had my guys running the roads, keeping the dust down, trying to keep the neighbors happy. Appreciate you letting us turn around in your parking lot. So I haven't received any complaints. I don't know if City Hall has or not, as far as dust or trucks. Other than that, we've got about 600 more loads to go before the pond's empty. And then that'll, that'll be complete for this year. Waterline project's still progressing. All the main lines are in. I think all the service lines on Cedar Lane have been installed, and they worked on the tie-in connections for Rosier and Cherry today. So now, should be clean up and prepare for asphalt at that point. From there, they'll move to Lepore. Once they get up there, they'll be running two crews. They're thinking just a couple more weeks on it.
The CE group did do a little watering on the bilt, well, I know that, because it was really dusty, so that was helpful for those residents.
Yeah, and if it gets to the point that it gets dusty in those neighborhoods, we can run our truck up in those areas as well, if they're not able to do so.
Good, thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
Could you explain in a little more detail how that valve that we put in with the county, you know, when that water line broke out there, how that, I guess, kept lines from backfeeding and kept water supply to everybody?
Well, it didn't keep anything from backfeeding. What happened was the 12-inch line broke off in a field and drained the 200,000 gallons that was in the tower. From that point, we responded. We shut off, we isolated the area that had the leak. We turned on the valve, the interconnect that we speak of. We turned that on, and we fed the residents in the apartments, the nursing home, the community centers, the pool. They were out of water for a little bit. About the time they seen low water pressure, we started restoring it. But without that, they would have been out of water until the next morning. So.
So that has to be done manually, you're talking about shutting the lines off and?
Correct. Yeah, it's not an automatic valve or any.
Right.
Anybody got any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
One report, too. Gary brought to my attention, Chief Starter's not here tonight for a report, but one of our retired firemen, Jeff Gurley, passed away, I understand, last night. And he'll be laid out Monday at Boswell's between 10:00 and 12:00, you know, so the city ought to send something and, you know, so you deal with Kenny on that, but appreciate his service and condolences to his family. So.
He's on a long time. Seventeen years.
He's on there for 17 years?
Seventeen years.
I didn't know him personally, but.
Yeah, he's a good man to have on.
On the maintenance.
Yeah, he's on truck.
Okay. Brings us to our COVID discussion. You think to report?
Report? No.
Well, it's not a report, but I mean, just to make awareness.
Nothing new. I read in the paper that they're still looking to officially appoint the Health Department Director.
Yeah, there's some, they've appointed one, but there's some legalities that are getting cleared up, so I'm sure that's going to be, I'm sure she's probably acting right now. I'm sure she's working.
She is, yeah.
I'm sure she's working, so just some legalities there that they're trying to clear up. But, yeah, I think the reports could come out daily, you know, from them, you know, so.
I personally would still like to see us do some, something a little more official than just some social media posts. I think a proclamation or something that would help get folks maybe a little more likely to follow the recommendations of the Health Department.
Is that a signed letter from City Hall or something of the sort?
Yeah.
That the city recommends?
Yeah, I think St. Francis County, whenever they were initially putting in their recommendations, it came from their Commissioner's Office.
Right.
It was a signed letter stating their strong recommendation for the community to wear a mask. It wasn't a mandate, but they were going to follow suit, so they encouraged everybody else to, so.
I have no problem making a recommendation.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that's an issue with me, you know, so.
So maybe we can get some kind of letter signed up with a signature to release to the paper or public of some sort?
Can we do that?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
And then also Halloween. I've seen different areas have done different things and.
Well, I think that the guidelines that are in place for Halloween, like we talked about last time, if the light's not on, then don't go knocking for candy. I think if we recommend that people still try to social distance and, you know, only go to the homes where the light's on, I think that, I think this is one of the holidays that is probably fairly COVID-friendly, you know?
Okay, right, I agree.
Something people can comply with, all the recommendations.
I think you'll see less kids on the streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And it's, but everything else, it's not going to be a problem, I think it's.
I think we should publish an official, you know, something saying we suggest, you know, and that, too, if you don't have your lights on and all those things we talked about.
Just reminding, probably, just reminding of the ordinance that only go to homes that have their porch light on, because it never fails that when you don't have your light on, somebody still knocks on your door. Not when I'm a Scrooge, I just, I'm out of my house going to another park.
And generally, don't we try and get the word out that it's between, you know, it's only on the 31st, and these are the hours?
The hour goes on, and there's a regulated time.
Right.
Because since it's Saturday, too, you might have some people lingering, you know? It's not a school night, so people, so just, all we can do is put the information out there, but I think it is important to put it out there.
And it's not going to be raining.
So.
Why would you say anymore?
Okay. Is there any, what, do you want to come up with something on the COVID deal? Okay. Any committee reports? Any come up?
Just one thing. I just want to point out, we've got Gary and Phil Tucker, Gary Whitman and Phil Tucker here from our St. Gene Access TV.
Appreciate you, man, and what you do for our community.
Yeah, for sure. That's what we need.
Toby, anything for planning and zoning?
Nope. No one's in your eye over there.
Just to touch on what Toby said earlier in his notes, at the Park Board meeting on Tuesday, they agreed to host their annual pumpkin glow down at Main Street Park that's going to be on the 24th. They will look for the best ways to make it as, to follow the COVID recommendations, you know, social distancing and.
Is that a Friday or Saturday?
It's going to be Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Yeah. And then, that's the biggest thing to report. Still trying to get our minds on the next steps with the park planning, which isn't the resolution on the consent agenda tonight. Looking at potentially consulting with the Doncies, hiring them for consulting on our next steps, to make sure that we're going in a positive direction and not tripping over ourselves too much. So, I've got a couple Park Board members, a couple new members of the Park Board that will look to appoint here at our October meeting.
You get a fan?
Yeah, they've been attending the meetings, to stay built in, so.
Good. Okay, more reports? Any public comments? If more public comments, move for approval on that consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Very good. Takes us to whole business. Bill number 4384, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith? Alderwoman Johnson?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Ideman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one absent. Bill number 4384 now becomes ordinance number 4306.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4385, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City, to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2020, budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Dunman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one absent. Bill number 4385 now becomes ordinance number 4307.
Thank you. Bill number 4386, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, approving the annual budget for fiscal year 2021 and approving an effective date. Move approval.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Dunman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Ideman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one absent. Bill number 4386 now becomes ordinance number 4308.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4387, an ordinance, an ordinance, the St. Genevieve Code, ordinance, Chapter 230, Solid Waste, Article 1, General Section 230.030, prohibited practices as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster? Alderman Dunman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Dunman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one absent. Bill number 4387 now becomes ordinance number 4309.
Thank you very much. Takes us to new business, employee financial impact. Happy.
So this is based on the health insurance that we're now charging employees that'll start October 1st. Trying to get things lined up with performance reviews and that, I missed the mark. I'm trying to determine or looking at when we would start our process of taking that 10% out of the employee paycheck, and then when we would also do a performance review merit raise. So it's up to 2% in this coming year. We have a three-month lapse of when that goes into effect, so we're going to start taking money out first. We don't do the performance review until January, February, so it could be three months or more. So that was brought to my attention, and I wanted to bring it to the board because some of the discussion in the Healthcare Committee was, we don't want to negatively impact our employees if at all possible. So we have budgeted in the up to 2% raise as of October 1st, so it wouldn't affect the budget if we changed that on how we want to do it. So I wanted to give some options as to how you might want us to approach it. So we can, we can leave it just as is. I mean, that's, we don't do anything, we don't change anything, we, you know, the increase goes into effect next week, we begin performance reviews in January, February, that's it. I mean, you're, you're going to be, we'll do them as quickly as possible, but there wouldn't be any financial reaction to it, to assist the employees. We could do a temporary ordinance to change the performance reviews back, try to move them, we can put them in October, we can move them to September, we'll be late, but we can at least get it done before the end of October, say. And then we could retroactive that back to October 1st, and then the employees could then be compensated for that time that they're not getting that raise. We could wait until January, February, when they're scheduled, and if you're willing to allow us to retroactive back to October 1st, that means it would be whatever we catch up with that would help offset the cost of health insurance. Or we suspend taking out the 10% until we get to the performance raises. So again, that was one of the discussion items. If you're satisfied with what we've come up with and how we, how I've developed it, that's fine. But I, you know, again, it was discussed in our Health Committee, Healthcare Committee. We didn't want to negatively affect everybody too much. It was going to affect them some, but, you know, I've now made it where it's, because of the timing, you're missing out on any chance of any raise, since we aren't getting it just as a raise as of October 1.
So, I guess the question, you know, we talked about a fixed raise, and now you're talking about a 2% performance.
He meant the 50 cent.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
50 cents, that's right.
Okay.
My apologies.
All right, because I was a little confused, I thought we were going to double dip.
No, it's 50 cents. It is a merit raise, and it is 50 cents.
How is the employee paying for this? Is it paid upfront at the year, or is it deducted from every check?
It's twice a month. Each check, half of whatever you're.
And this is their yearly responsibility, or their monthly?
Monthly.
Okay.
Monthly.
And those amounts are based off of the 10%?
Yes.
Of the premium?
So next year it goes up 20. The year after that, it goes up to 30%. So that will increase, and we may not be able to offset it totally with whatever the raise is, depending on what the economy's like. But after this year, going forward, the dates of performance reviews and health insurance will match up, right? We can make it that way, if you want to pass an ordinance to set it up in that respect. So what you're doing is performance reviews before the, before the budget is passed, which is the way it's already set, was set up before I changed it. It's just that summertime is not the easiest time to get your people in to do your performance reviews.
So you're still calling this a performance review, but this is a flat across-the-board raise?
No, no, it's, but it's a merit raise.
They can earn up to 50 cents.
Up to, yeah.[1772.33]
Up to 50 cents, okay.
So the, the insurance recycles in the spring, right? Like that's when the plans up?
We'll renew that June 1, or July 1.
Okay.
So that may change anyway.
So the performance reviews would be in place before the next, any future changes to health?
No.
To the health.
No. So what will happen is the, the insurance will always increase in July, which will not, we don't have anything to, to change that. That will automatically go up. Employees will have to pay the difference. At this point, if we want to supplant some of that, because of the way I've scheduled it, we're off three to four months because we're implementing it as of October 1. But we're not implementing the potential of earning up to 50 cents in a performance or the merit raise. So that's, that's the gap that we have built in.
That's this year, but, but next, going into next year or whatever.
So next year, we would do performance reviews in the summer, say, but we're still not going to give until the beginning of the next budget year, which would be October 1.
But they'll have known what their increase is for that year before.
Well, not till the budget's finished.
They'll know what the health premium increases.
Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is in January, they'll know what their income is roughly until, you know, when we, when we do put this in, so they can just make a decision in June, not wondering when their review's going to be or if we're going to change that bill. This, their January review is basically accounting for this health insurance increase and next year's.
It would be for this budget year.
Yeah.
So their, for the performance review would be for this budget year, from October to September.
And right now, what, what we decided previously was reviews would take place in January, be due by the end of February?
Yeah, we were saying end of March.
End of March. That seems like a long time to me to, you know.
Yeah, that's why, yeah. That's why it was brought up. So do we need a, just to tell you what we think or do we need a motion on one of these or? Looking at a consensus as to, if you were to do like two or three, then we're probably going to need a voice vote. I have one's going to require that I bring an ordinance back at the next meeting. I would like to see number three.
Happy, have we looked through the pay scale for each of the employees? Cause this is a fixed amount. You know, this is going to impact different employees at different pay rates differently.
No, technically it won't because everybody's getting 50 cents or up to 50 cents.
Well, but if it's a performance-based, they're not guaranteed 50 cents.
No, but it could, but it, so if you don't get up to 50 cents, which is $80 a month, then you're going to get somewhere up to that amount. So it's 12 divided, or 24 divided into 1,040.
Well, you know, my major concern always been all along is for those lower-end tiered employees being affected more. And that's why my comment, you know, that you referred to in here, you know, was exactly that. It's for those lower-tiered employees, you know, cause if that's the case, we're erasing all of their increase and going to ask for another $14 after that increase if they get the full amount. There's a lot of ifs there for the lower end.
The lower-tier employees are also being brought up. So we're looking at about a dollar to a dollar fifty, plus the 50 cent merit raise. They are lower people. So we're trying to get them up to $13, $14 an hour. Yep. So I'm with Joe. I think you, I'm, I'm open. I'm agree. Paul, I agree.
I mean, it seems fair.
It is fair.
Yeah. I would like to see that window for the, the performance reviews be less than three months. I mean, I would, I would hope that just one month, the month of January might be sufficient.
I think it will be.
For most departments. I don't know. If some, if a department head in the room disagrees with me, please let me know.
One month.
Okay.
I think they'll be as anxious as everybody to get it.
Right. That, and that's, and then, then they'll know and then, yeah. That's my two cents. But I do agree with Joe about number three.
Yeah.
Anybody else with number three or?
That's good.
Will you agree with that number three? Happy with number three?
Number three?
Yes.
I'm happy you mentioned also that if there's an increase in July, when the premium comes due, or when the renewal comes due, I still think we need to work towards closing that gap, you know, on the timeframe to budget year to renewal. That's not set in stone that you can only do it that month.
And we will, at that point, we're looking at February, maybe March at the latest, we're going to have our healthcare committee back together then and sit, sit around and talk about that.
Right.
So then we'll have recommendations for the board to approve.
Yeah, cause if you bring that together, I mean, that brings the performance portion of it into the, into the budget, into the increase, you know, of health insurance and stuff. That we'd have everything, you know, right there to make the decision off of.
But usually you only approve a merit raise, total raise or whatever for the budget year.
Right.
So that July start date would not, but that would be, it's not just budget year unless we're, we're setting up two performance reviews at this point. Because your, your increase, you're giving an increase with the, the performance review that we do in January, but then we're not increasing it in July again.
Right.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't start again until October 1 or thereafter.
Right. But therefore, having all of those renewal times, budget performance all due at the same time, it would be a clearer picture, you know, for everybody, even the employee.
Right. So if we can move the, the startup date for insurance, health insurance, and yes, we could, it was more on the budget year than we.
Right.
Yes, Gary?
Why is the pay increase not running with the fiscal year?
Cause we're doing performance instead of.
We always did in the past. We did performance in, in Sep, August, September, and then it went into effect in October.
Right. So we're trying to move it to a time when we're as busy as what we were this summer.
Going to make more sense around with the fiscal year though?
Usually it's in fiscal year. So prior to this, I'm used to just doing it sometime from October 1 to September 30. And then you, if that, with some of the cities, you would just get it whenever you did the performance review, or it would just start at the beginning of the, of the budget year. But we didn't do them, you know, concentrated in the summer, middle of summer, where people seem to be most active.
Yeah.
So if we delay, we can then discuss if we want to just change that performance review back to summertime. And then we'll be more in sync with what our budget year is, and then we can get the insurance moved. And that would also, that would start on the, on the budget year, then we would know that upfront, that we'd get a clue.
Does that seem much work for the summer?
Apparently not. That's one of our busiest departments.
Moving down to the board, do you hear me, Brown Amendment?
I mean, my point is, aside from vacations, we'll be here regardless. But I'll do whatever, whatever the board wants or is, is in favor of. But I'm happy that Mr. Wold brought it up. I mean, it was, that was our concern, that there would be a four or five month gap of paying the insurance without receiving the, the raise all set. So I appreciate your consideration over that.
All right. Let's do a motion.
Yeah. Cause you're going to switch back to the employer paying the full premium.
Right.
Yeah. So we need to have a vote on the alternative to that.
So we need a motion for number three then? Yeah. I make a motion for number three?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, is there any other business? Any other communications? If that's the case, if there is none, we'll call this meeting in turn. Be ready for our work session.